She left, she took too much time.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this Linden City Council meeting here today, Monday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-five, at five fifteen P. M. Here in our Linden City chambers. I'd like to welcome you all here. My name is Carolyn Lundberg. I will be presiding as mayor here of these proceedings, and grateful for our council. We have a full cohort this evening. We will first begin with an invocation by council member Cole Houli, and that will be followed by a pledge of allegiance led by Glenn Mitchell. Thank you. We'll go to that point.
Heavenly Father, we are, we are humbled and grateful for the favorable lives that we have here. We're grateful for our community and for the opportunity we have to consider ways of helping each other and improving it. We're also grateful for the service of all the committee members and staff and everyone that helps keep this city moving smoothly, and in particular, recognizing the members of the Board of Adjustment for their service. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so very much. All right, we will now begin with our agenda, and there are printed agendas at the doorway there, or if you're following online. And we will first begin with a call to order and roll call here. So I'll start with on my left.
Jake Hoyt, present.
Van Broderick, present.
Lincoln Jacobs, present.
Carolyn Lundberg, present.
Steve Stewart, present.
Cole Houli, present.
Wonderful. All right, we are very excited this evening. We have a couple presentations. This is item number two on our agenda. And we first are very, very, very excited to offer a thank you, a heartfelt thank you for many, many years of service for our Board of Adjustment members. So we'd like to call you forward, please. Jeff Wilson, Steve Smith, Jeff Southard, Greg Slater, and Glenn Mitchell. So. All right, these gentlemen have, let's really quickly tell us how many years you've been on the Board of Adjustments. Can you count?
I think I lost track. I believe it was nineteen ninety-four I started serving on Board of Adjustments. So, a while. Eighteen for me?
Fan, wow.
I think seven, I'm not sure.
And I honestly have no idea.
Not as long as that.
Maybe you were not gray-haired when you started?
Was I here before?
Yes, you were.
Well, our Board of Adjustments are members of our community who help serve when there's a dispute and something, someone wants an appeal to something that this legislative body decided. And so we have relied on you for a few occasions, hopefully not too often. But we appreciate that you've always been there, willing to come when called upon to help with those issues. So we wanted to thank you. We are now moving to a different process that is working with an intermediary judge process, which is a little bit more of a standard that's kind of happening statewide. And so thank you so much. We commend you all. And we just wanted to first, we have to give you your own very copy. If I could have some council members hand them some our centennial puzzles, and then we'd like to come over here and have a picture with you, if we may.
You might already have one, bud.
You stand in front of us and this makes me almost want to talk.
You stand by me.
You're still above me.
All right, we gotta make sure we see heads here.
Stevie Bob's gotta be in the middle.
One, two. One, two.
Thank you so much.
Thanks so much.
Except for your speeches.
You mean you're not staying for the whole meeting? I mean, we might even do.
Listen to the road cross development manual amendment. There, okay. All right. All right, our next presentation is going to be, is Melinda here? Very good. All right, Melinda is an MPA student who has a proposal for a weather station for emergency management and public works purposes. So thank you. We have some visuals that she has provided as well. So, welcome to Linden City.
Thank you. Thank you for the introduction. I have to first off say that I'm proud to be a citizen of Linden, and proud to have been here for over twenty years. And the more I've researched, the more proud I am. So I think you all are doing a great job, and I'm just really, I'm, I'm proud that you're out there as the public face of our city. It means a lot. Okay, so to begin, you've already introduced me. Like I said, I've been here for over twenty years with my husband, my family. We've raised our kids here. And I am a student at U V U. My professor's actually here. I'm working under him, Chris Lindquist, and then the former Emergency Services Manager, Kelly, Kelly Johnson. She may pop in tonight, I'm not sure, but, okay, so we can change the slide. I'm just gonna give you an overview of what I'll be talking about. We're gonna go over kind of how the project was started, and then talk about the challenges, the reason why it was initiated, and then the benefits, the options, considerations, funding, and then at the last, we'll leave some time open for questions, if you have any questions. So you can change the slide again. Thank you, Adam. Next one.
It did not work? You know what? It worked on my end. Let me, there it goes. There's a delay there. I apologize.
There we go. Okay, thank you. So Kelly noticed while she was the emergency manager that during a really harsh hailstorm that we had, many of you probably remember that one, there was a lack of information getting out. There, we have kind of a gap, and there was a lack of information getting out, and it kind of hit a lot of us by surprise. So she noticed a need for, you know, kind of some improved information, and was able to speak with my professor, and that's how I got involved, as this is just a project for my, a course that I'm taking with my professor here. So because of Linden's unique topography, because of our hills and our valley out there by Utah Lake, we do have a gap in data.
And. Melinda, I apologize for interrupting. Would you be so kind as to move the mic?
Oh, sorry.
So I can pick you up for those online and recording? That would be helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry. Excuse me. I'm looking this way.
Gotta get pretty close to it.
Okay, is that better?
Yes.
All right. So we're here tonight to just look at the different options and choose what you think is best for Linden. So you can switch to the next slide. This is a map of the existing sensors that are all around Utah Lake. And if you look up in this corner right here, this is where Linden is, and then we're in between these two sensors. So that is the reason why we kind of get missed with the, the data that's coming out and being transferred back to NOAA and to the, the major weather stations that, that give us those emergency alerts. And you can switch the slide. Thank you, Adam. So the benefits, just an overview, weather, weather, weather stations can provide early warnings for severe weather events and help protect people and property during natural disasters. The other benefit is they, they give us improved flood drainage and wildfire risk planning, and then it can help support public works, the roads and the park utilities. A new weather station will give Linden basically just an additional data point, so that we can connect better with the big systems and that we can have more information. So I'd wanna give kudos first off to Juan Garrido, to the Public Works Manager. He recognized right away the benefits of a weather station being able to connect into the public works because, because of the technology capability, a weather station can actually connect to ground sensors, and they can use it to monitor how much watering is happening within the city. So that's a pretty big benefit, too. And Juan, he just, he was right on board. He knew right about that, even things that I hadn't discovered yet. So I appreciate that he was so in the know about that right off. These are the different options that we have that I've researched into for the city to, to consider. There are three different brands here. The one is, the different grades are the semi-professional grade, which is Davis Instruments. Professional grade is Nova Links Corporation, and then the research grade is Campbell Scientific. They're kind of different from lower to high price points and different capabilities for each one. So with the, the semi-professional on Davis, the data is owned by Davis, and it can still communicate with the bigger weather systems that, that provide information to us. But the, the information is owned by them. And then there's different technicalities, the, the different things that we can implement by downloading different types of software and, and still be able to keep us in the know with that extra data sensor. The more advanced one, next in line, is the Nova Links, and I got a bid from them and from Campbell Scientific as well. And they just kind of improve in the life expectancy of the system as well as the capabilities and how well they can connect with other software. So that's kind of the overview there. The price range for the lowest one, about seventeen hundred to thirty-four hundred, moving on up to about over five thousand. And then the most expensive one is almost twelve thousand. And then there's a yearly cloud subscription fee for that, too. We can switch the slide, Adam. So the considerations, as you're making your decision, there's just a couple other things I wanted to make you aware of. Davis is honestly one of the best prosumer options. Like it's kind of, it, it can vary between just the hobbyist that likes to stay informed on the weather, and then go on up to people who are more informed and, and needing accurate data. It's a, it's a very well-known system that is well-regarded and, and rated very highly. That one is, it's an affordable entry point to give us an extra sensor, like I was saying, that we're missing here in Linden. And there is some options to upgrade to professional networks, too. With Nova Links, that one is more of a robust system, more heavy duty. That is based in California. They, they're a pretty old company. They've been around since nineteen eighty-eight. I felt like they had a good reputation in the industry, and their system seemed like it was really straightforward. It's not gonna take a lot of technical knowledge to be able to implement and get that one going. The same with Davis. That one is pretty much out-of-the-box installation. It's ready to go. For Campbell Scientific, that one is a Utah company. They're based out of Logan, and they have been around for over fifty years. They're pretty much the top of the line. They're well-regarded. They, it's really interesting. They have, their weather station is on top of Mount Everest. So they're just, they're as good as they get, basically. So that one, they, they are the most accurate, the most durable, and they can also connect with the most, the, the most different type of, sorry, capabilities, different software. They just can pretty much link in with anything that you can throw at it. So Juan can, he can have his way with, with, they're basically challenging you to find something that they, they can't connect to. So anyone could, could be on that challenge, not just Juan. But we can change to the next slide. There are different funding options that I was able to research and find for different ways to pay for the system. There's the transient room tax, and then a bunch of different grants, too. Not listed on there are some that I found with the Department of Safety that also has some options for that. And those seem like they're pretty straightforward. It seems like it is in line with the purpose of a weather station, keeping people informed and helping to protect. And we can switch to the next slide. These are just an overview of the different systems, and I put it into kind of a grid so you could kind of go through and see like the cost versus the life expectancy, just so that you could help determine the value, determine your needs, see, see where you think that you are, what you think your needs are now versus long-term, and then determine what you think is the best option for us. So if you want me to, I can go through and just kind of say what I think are the, the main considerations, and then if you have any questions afterwards, we can go over that. So the Davis, the Davis system is expected to last about five to ten years, and we've gone over the price point for that, seventeen hundred to thirty-four hundred. And then you can add different systems for it, too. If you want like a, a solar panel, that's about a thousand dollars more. That way it could run independently of power. Then the Nova Links is fifty-three hundred, and it's expected to last about ten to fifteen years. And then lastly is the Campbell, and it's about fifteen to twenty years. For the accuracy and reliability, Davis is good accuracy. They're, for the price point, they are durable, and, and they're fit for general awareness purposes. The Nova Links is high for how accurate it is and how reliable. And it also has additional sensors that you could buy in addition to that package price. And it comes with a heated precipitation gauge. That was a consideration I found kept popping up. Because of our, our winters that we have, the snow can get into a rain gauge and make it so it's not picking up accurate measurements. This one is heated. And I also want to point out, it measures precipitation when it's wet, but it does not measure snowfall. So measuring snowfall is not something that it does. It just is the precipitation. So, and then with Campbell Scientific, like I said, it is the, the highest for accuracy and reliability and long-term precision. That one, to have a heated weather gauge like they use on Mount Everest and other places, that's an additional, additional five thousand dollars. So, but my contact there said that Utah doesn't really need the, the heated rain gauge for it. So that's not something that most of the users need. And since they're from Logan, I think they're pretty familiar with our, our, our winters. So with the, the winter measurements, there is an option of adding a heated rain gauge with the Davis Instruments for, for an additional fee. And it's, it's good for helping make safety decisions, as well as public dashboards, but not operations. Nova Links is excellent, they, with their heated, their heated gauge included, and good for safety decisions and suitable for storm and flood warnings. And I know that Linden has a, a very robust system for their, their warning systems in place already. I looked through and, and saw the different things that we're doing for emergency services, and once again, I'm proud of our city. Also, next is Campbell Scientific for, for their winter measurements. They're superior. They work a lot with, like, they've worked with the Department of Public Safety and science grade for planning, engineering, and education. I want to just point out, I know that we're expected to get an education center down by Utah Lake. And so that was something that was interesting to me in looking at this project long-term, where thinking of the education center, the weather station being something that could be incorporated there, might be something to think about as you're considering this. So the different power sources, I'm not sure if you want me to go back through and, and say everything. I know that you guys got this beforehand. So maybe I'll just open it up for questions, if anyone has questions.
Yes, thank you. So this is a project that you were doing for your MPA, or, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Really quickly, who collects the data and manages it?
So that's something that, like, with the Davis system, the, it's, it's kind of all internal, depending on the data logger that you get. The data logger is like the brain of the system, and that can vary in price point, too. So the, the instruments that are on the weather station will be downloaded onto an S D card. That was what is used for the Nova Links. It's on an S D card, and then the other ones have a different capability to record that. It's, it's all automated. And then the type of sensors that you use can determine what it's capable of measuring. And then the third-party options, like, speaking for the, the public works use, they have a, a company that they are using to work with for their sprinkling system. So the data is taken in onto the weather station and then transmitted to third parties. So they manage the, the information, and they can program it for their needs and, and to communicate with different sources.
So Melinda, great. Correct me if I'm wrong, there was something I thought I heard that this would be shared data with a national, on a national or state level, as well as then internal potential use. Can you illuminate a little bit more about that?
So NOAA has a system that, that the weather station, the data points they gather from all over the place. If we go back to our map.
Are all of these NOAA system data collectors, or are they, are you just tagging random ones here on the map?
These are all NOAA system ones. These all connect. And then private users, like people that have a Davis system in their yard, they also can connect with NOAA. So they've got a more accurate picture of what's happening in real time.
Great. And then, so some of these, it looks like, it's kind of like a one-time buy. Do all of them have an annual subscription? It looked like at least the most sophisticated one would have a subscription model, but the others, no. It's just like you buy it and then you go?
Well, if you want to have your information uploaded to the cloud, then there is an additional price for all of them. But you don't have to have it onto the cloud. The Nova Links, it, it can go just onto an S D card. So, but then there's the option, if you want to have that uploaded to a cloud, too, to share with more users.
Okay. So you listed some funding sources here.
Mm-hmm.
Would you be recommending, is this something that as part of your project to get, say, are you proposing one sensor, two sensors? You mentioned, you know, the future Lake Science Education Center, which is yet to be constructed.
Mm-hmm.
What are you anticipating in this proposal that you would be recommending for this graph to not have the gap that you pointed out?
I would say short term, if you're just looking at immediate needs, the, the least expensive one, given that the education center is several years off, possibly. I think I heard that that may be as many as like four years away to, to have the education center up and running. Short term, I would say just, you know, an inexpensive weather station to provide the additional data point. Long term, if you're able to get the funding, I would say that the more expensive ones for sure would do better, especially if it's for educational purposes. I see that as an opportunity to interact with, you know, a bunch of different people. The kids could come there and learn about weather stations. I'm not sure what the, the overall, you know, audience of the education center would be, but I, I see that having a weather station there would be a benefit to kind of provide more information and, and something interesting that people would want to learn about.
Very good. So National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration.
Right, that's known in Salt Lake. Mm-hmm.
That's the U.S. government agency.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things I, Kelly had mentioned was, for example, the event from August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, we didn't get any warnings until we were midway through the storm from NOAA. And so she felt that there was a little bit of a lack of sensors to collect this type of information. I see a nod from our Public Works Director. Juan, could you, I guess I just want to back up a little bit and just maybe establish a little bit more why we would want to potentially invest in a sensor?
How would this work?
Obviously, we want to tie into the NOAA system, but also benefit the city for, what are all the different uses that this would benefit?
Yeah, so the way I understand it, if we get our own weather station, and at my location that I was talking to Melinda was, perhaps put it more towards halfway up in the foothill, maybe at the, where, where we have the water tanks. So we're kind of a little elevated. We already have power, and we have fiber optic. I don't know if those are needs for facilitating the communication. In my, in my view, I think this weather station kind of works in the background, providing the data to NOAA. This year, we did get a warning of a, of a storm, and we were able to actually, I got it in my phone. I was able to contact the people that were working in the main ditch, and say, you have a big storm coming up. And they prepared, got all the equipment out, and here it came like clockwork. So that was one good, good thing that we got that warning. For the Parks Department, so Heath has the most weather track controllers at his command, but the, the one grant that I work with, the Water Conservation People Central Utah, is that if we can prove that we save, for every thousand gallons, we get fifty dollars back. So on that Keeneland Pond, we put a new, a new type of grass. We connected the weather track to, to the current stations. And when I talk to the weather track people, says, if you're gonna get a weather station, make sure you get one that has this, this scenario.
And talk to the, the sensors to turn off the sprinklers.
And one of the, the more particular one was the solar radiation type thing. Is that the one that you recall, that I was telling you that we need to have a weather station that measured some kind of solar?
The solar, yeah.
Yes. And, and then that way, the, the weather station says, okay, not only if it's raining, if it's, if it's gonna be stormy, whatever, but if it says, if it has too much radiation, radiation causing, causing too much evaporation, then these controllers pretty much adjust to one minute, two minute per, per station. These new controllers are not the ones that you say, I want to water Monday, Wednesday, Friday for ten minutes. This one, you say, I have this kind of soil, I have this kind of turf, I have this kind of slope, and then you say, start. And these controllers just run automatically.
So if they know it's a windy day, and it's just gonna blow in the wind, and we're wasting water?
Yeah, we're delaying, we're delaying two days. We're delaying four hours. It's just those weather track controllers that Heath got for all the parks. I got the cemetery, I got the detention ponds that I'm starting to.
You say with C U W C D that has the fifty dollar rebate?
Yes. So I think we apply for that one, and we are getting, what, like eight thousand, something like that? Yeah, so just have to prove now that we are actually saving forty percent of the water we were using, so.
Municipally or also with residents?
Uh, this is more for a commercial type setting, but I'm starting that program now with every, with every thing that we have at Public Works, like the cemetery is the next one, and then I'm gonna be doing.
Schools and churches would be great, too.
Yes. So we're kind of the guinea pig on this, with Central Utah, with Amanda Strack, I think is the name of the person at Central Utah.
So you feel that one station, the least expensive, would be a good start, potentially in that location, is what you're thinking at this point? Maybe ultimately two, one by the lake as well?
And I think the stations are fairly portable, too. So you can start it over here and see where, I think where, where the map shows, we have a gap, just kind of going up the, up the hill. You can see we have plenty on, on the bottom, you know, so I think in the upper part, right there where, where Adam is putting his cursor, I think will be, I had a Davis station in, when I worked at Springville, and it was just the, the beginners, so I can track some things, but, but I'm familiar with the Davis and.
You may want the, if, if you're gonna be using it a lot for.
You may want the, if you're going to be using it a lot for relating to water use and how much the sprinklers are going to be going, you may want to bump up your system because of its, its capability of doing a ground moisture sensor. That's not something that Davis is really well known for. And their, their ground moisture may be less, less quality for sure if it's, if it's used in, you know, in a bigger, in a bigger way, like with the sprinkling systems.
I would, I would think the second choice would be a good option, but that's the other thing. When, as part of your project, are you applying for the grants yourself or is that you turn it over to us and we find the funding?
I wasn't told that I, I am applying for it, but I'd be happy to help out if you need help with it. I've found more than just what I've listed on my handout with you. So I'd be happy to help with that if, if needed, but that wasn't part of what I was understanding right now. But I'm, I'm a resident here, too. I benefit from it, too. So I'm happy to continue on.
I don't know how we.
Tonight, tonight was just intended to be a presentation by Melinda and we appreciate her efforts and the, and the information that he's provided. And so we'll take this under advisement and we'll coordinate more with Juan and Heath. And if this is something that we feel like we should pursue further, then we would bring this back as a budget amendment and action item.
Budget amendment or into the new budget perhaps that we'll be starting to discuss? And really quickly, on the grants, who would pursue potential grant funding?
That would, that would most likely be the city that we would apply for that.
What, which employee do you think? I, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking the same thing Mayor is who.
We have this new proposal.
You know, as we are trying to develop our new proposal, this is great. I, I see this as kind of an alley-oop, an assist. I would love to see one of our employees run with it. And I think they're going to do the work.
They need a test.
And, and I think this one would qualify. I, I guess is my opinion. This is one of those unique ones where we talked about, well, what if there's someone helping out? Anyways, we appreciate you doing the legwork. We're, we're trying to incentivize as much we can, our city employees, to go out and seek these grants. And so we appreciate the assist.
Yeah, yeah. There's some, some really good ones on the Department of Public Safety that are worth looking into, too. So, and I gave those over to Juan, so.
Cool.
Very good. Thank you so much for coming, Melinda. And I hope this means your professor is giving you an A. All in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, thank you. So any further comments or announcements, Council? Thank you very much.
Really quick, before you move on, Mayor, if we could take a quick second, wanted to introduce Todd Christensen is our new emergency manager, took Kelly's spot. And we're grateful that Todd's here and comes with us with a lot of experience and, and I'm sure you'll be seeing him from time to time with different city events.
Yes, thank you. Since we don't have something formally on the agenda, that would be wonderful. Would you like to stand and just give a quick 30-second summary of where you've been?
Todd Christensen, I'm just ending the tail end of a 26-year-plus military career, active duty with the Utah Army National Guard. So this is my retirement plan, as you will. I have a strong background in civil response, domestic response, on the weapons of mass destruction side and the chemical response side, as well as the overall, just like I said, military response to civil authorities. And also have a background in preparedness and survival instruction as one of my hobbies as well. So I'm married, three kids, and been a longtime resident of Utah County, more in particular, for all of my life, except for a few paid vacations to sunny, sandy places around the world. As a taxpayer.
Those days are over.
Well, for me, they're over.
All right. Thank you. Welcome. Welcome to the team. We're excited. As I mentioned to him earlier, Kelly leaves a very robust legacy and it'll be exciting to see what great things we can continue and what new things you might bring into play to kind of evolve and see, see where we can go. So thank you. All right, we now have item number three on our agenda. This is our open session for public comments. So any members in the audience who have something they would like to address the council with that is not on tonight's agenda may come forward at this time. All right, seen none. We'll move on to item number four, our council reports. Either and want to take a first?
I can lead out. Spoke to Chief. Chief described, I liked it, I liked how he described it. We had a few great arrests, as opposed to not great arrests. Fugitive, DUI, drugs, weapons. Appreciate Chief, appreciate all he does. We're excited to have Todd on the team as well. With the potential liaison assignments later on in this meeting, Chief and I have a lunch set up to kind of go over game plan for the next year, what we can do to help the PD. We love the PD. So excited about that. And I think that's all I have.
Water has been a very busy time for us, dealing with the Provo bench and the North Union canals. The, the boards have met multiple, multiple times. The shareholders have met. Decisions have been voted upon on both of those canal companies to end them as a means of conveyance and which is, and then the city, we will be taking our water through the Provo River Aqueduct and through that pipeline we put in, going down 400 north. And so this is a significant benefit to the citizens of Linden. We remove the, the safety risk of open canals. We sometimes are losing up to 40% of the water in the canal, which we won't anymore. We remove the liability of flooding basements of houses. When, when these canals were built, when the pioneers first came, if, if a little bit of water went out, it didn't cause any trouble. Now it floods very expensive homes. So this is very good for the, for the city. Each of the, we've been working with all of the water shares, holders, certificate holders, trying to come up with options for them. We're hoping that they'll connect into secondary water. Juan's been doing an incredible job. We've, we've been talking about this with shareholders for about five years and letting them know of different options of things that they can do to still get their water in a different way. But this is very, very good for the city. Still ongoing. Shareholders are going to be making decisions. As a city, we have to do some things as well. Juan, do you want to update us on our capacity or too soon yet?
Too soon.
Maybe too soon. We're hopeful to get all of the capacity we need out of the PRA. And we've been excited before, but we think we're on to something there that'll be very good for us in the city. And it's looking good over at the cemetery as the expansion project is ongoing.
I actually took some pictures. They just poured the asphalt on Saturday. Had a huge crew out there.
They did a really good job. They used a technique with two pavers at the same time. So there is no cold seam. There was a hot mix paper right next to the other one. So the actual joint there, usually you do one pass and you come around and then that gets cold and you can visibly see it this way. I went there Sunday and today and that seam was.
Flawless. Very good. Thank you.
Thanks. I know you guys are excited to hear about my trash.
Trash talk, bring it on.
So when we first got our, is this not working?
Hear it as well.
Is that better?
It's just, whoa.
It's you.
All right. So I had the opportunity to go to this trash conference last week and it was very, very informative, very enlightening. When I first met with Mayor and talked about taking the North Point Solid Waste Transfer Station assignment, I like going to the dump. It's not a dump, it's a transfer station. I like hydraulics and I thought this would be cool. What I learned was, wow, there was just so much information. We charge at our landfill, clear down south, we charge 1150 a ton. We just had this conference, San Juan County in Utah charges $59 a ton. In Ohio, where there's a lot of open space, it's $39 a ton. So if you think about our garbage charges right now, we're like 12-something for a garbage can, four or five something for the recycle. We've been making good decisions and we have the right people in the right places and it's, it's a deep organization, a couple organizations deep. Those things can change fairly easily, right? So if we're only paying 1150, San Juan County's 60, right? Our garbage could go up if this delicate, delicate balance isn't maintained all the way through. We have the right people making the right decisions. There is a budget meeting tonight for North Point Solid Waste. The only time in the year they have them in the evenings because it has to be open for the public. So that starts in five minutes. They do have a $2 million discussion item. I've gone over the bud, or tonight's meeting with Adam and I feel like it's okay if I sneak away to help have information there. Some of the other things I learned while I was there, plastic bottles, there's a lot of debate. Do they really get recycled, right? I've learned in the past, not so much. I saw it happen. I saw it happening in Ohio at this recycle center. They do get recycled. They are being utilized. Are we doing it here? I'm not sure. Republic has, has, we met, Mark Sherwood came and did a presentation last year, maybe not quite a year ago. I learned that he had, he's passed away. He offered to take us on a tour and he's passed away, but I'm still trying to line up a tour so that we can find out of our own recycling processes. Also, in the past, I've learned that Seattle is one of the only places that is profitable. This, the center that we went to, 1.8 million EBITDA last year. So there are a lot of profitable recycle centers. There are a lot of things that are getting recycled that sometimes in the past we didn't feel like that was happening. The other thing, takeaway that was really interesting to me, they were talking about AI in the trash industry, but the people who presented talked about it across the entire municipality. And as I was sitting there, I was thinking about our water breaks, right? Juan has amazing information, right? Data, great data. They're using AI for predictive analysis. So what would have happened if AI could have come out and said, yeah, but given the age of these and this and this and this and this, you're going to have some problems here. Maybe, maybe AI is a solution for that not happening again in the future. Talked with Adam about AI and he's got, his, his staff is all plugged into AI. He shared with me a lot of AI stuff that they've been doing over the last little bit. We have the right leader and the right leader is making the decision. So I was very excited about that. Planning Commission, there, we discussed and have now discussed on a couple meetings. Ordinance amendments there along the, our 700 North Corridor. Specifically, they spent a lot of time talking about car washes. There was a lot of public that was here. That's going to be, it got continued, but that's going to be coming back to us. Just, just a heads up on there. Parks and Rec, we have a Turkey Trot Saturday. You can register online or Saturday morning. Autumn Triplet joined us last year sometime, didn't she, Heath? She's been given a full-time offer in Provo. So we're grateful for her work, but she's going to be moving on and leaving us. And then, of course, reminder, Christmas tree lighting ceremony, December 1st, 6:00 PM.
Thank you so much. All right, Steve.
Squirk, there we go. Our youth council met last Monday. We had the opportunity to hear from Juan, who came in and did a great overview of Public Works and, and gave our, our youth an opportunity to hear and see some very interesting information about our city and the public works and all that goes into it. I was actually impressed with a lot of the information that came. I thought I knew a lot more, but anyway, they came away with a much better understanding of what goes into our public works. We also had Jamie Jensen come and speak to us. She is our Linden Cares Coalition Director and she introduced that, the, to our youth council. That is the, the risk factors and, and preventions that can, or risk factors and the way that we can strengthen families and build community and resilience and reduce the risk of addiction and substance abuse and such. And they, they were very astute and inquisitive and were very engaged in, in that conversation. I was really impressed with our youth, the way that they approached that. And we will be looking for ways to include them more in our Linden Cares efforts.
Probably the thing of most consequence, I mean, the other groups that I'm a liaison with, they're all doing great work. We had, we met with the interlocal, the school committee today with the newly, well, mostly, there's one board seat that we won't know until tomorrow.
12 votes difference.
Yeah. So they're, they have to go through the curing process and double check up. It got really, really close.
So both of them came to the meeting.
Do that. Our board seat, Jen Lyman, won that. So this other board seat that's really close is an Orem board seat. So we all met together today to hand over some information to talk a little bit about how we will move forward as a group. Principally, the city interlocal group will have very little to do now. It's just with the school board. We just have an ongoing commitment, given our support of the lobbyist through the end of the upcoming legislative session. And that will be the end of our fiscal tie to the interlocal, but we're still supporting them to get as much as possible. We're negotiating with the other two districts to approach this date for some funding that could benefit all three districts is the current strategy, which would bring in some money, which would be great. And then we're also negotiating on one item that could bring in some additional funding to our school district. So the city's part's winding down and the school board's ramping up. But really good people, they're excited to get going, asking really good questions. So I think that's the biggest update for my group.
All right. Thank you so much, Cole. Today, I came to the city to do my weigh-in for the health challenge, gentlemen. Is it too late to do their weigh-in? Brittany, you got the scale here tonight? All right. Just the challenge.
Not on the record.
Say the number.
Trying to keep, encourage, you know, with the holidays that everyone eats responsibly, I guess. Maybe we all need to turn out for the Turkey Trot this Saturday.
On the way after.
And then we have, the dumpsters are out and about. I saw that they got empty today and as soon as one was empty, there was a big car coming and loading up. So we love keeping the community clean.
Hey, I drove right Friday night. I know they weren't supposed to be there till Saturday and I told my wife, I said, on your way home, drive past. And then there was one there. So I hurried and ran and put some stuff and it was already halfway full Friday night. So I think it's so well-used and, and money well-spent, cleanup for the community. Love that.
Many compliments from the community. That, that's there. They really like that service.
All right. And then we have the, the light parade on December 12th. Heath, oh, no? Bye-bye. Okay. Still in the newsletter.
I know. We, we should have, we spoke with the Oranado BD and he had some concerns about overtime and some other costs. So we're going to have to read that, we're just going to have to pull that, read that, that and make sure everybody knows.
Okay. So here's the announcement. No light parade this year, but we do have a beautiful tree lighting event and it will be indoors instead of freezing to death outdoors for an hour. And then we'll go outside to light the tree. But we're going to have a wonderful program. Do you want to share a little bit about that, Cole?
What you said is great.
Okay, all right.
Changing it a little bit to make it more.
Everyone a little more cozy, comfy. And to be able to hear the program hopefully better.
Yes, yes, hear it, yes.
All right, wonderful. And that is December 1st. Okay, wonderful tradition we have. Thank you. And really, the light parade was a COVID inspiration and some things with COVID have to come to an end. So that's all right. Okay, moving on now to our administrators' report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Cowie.
Just a reminder, for those that can make this, I need at least three of you for tomorrow at 1:00. I heard back, I don't know if I've heard from you, Van, are you available?
I think so. Does it matter if you're one of the persons?
To confirm, Jake, Steve, and Lincoln know that he left, so.
I'm planning to be here.
Okay. So we'll just meet here in this room. It should be pretty quick. The results, final results that we're canvassing as the Board of Canvas serves is supposed to be emailed to us no later than 12 noon tomorrow. So we'll be printing that stuff off for you guys to review and certify at 1:00 tomorrow. And that's an official advertised meeting.
Here in this room?
Here in this room.
Or are you doing the little?
Yeah, we'll do it here. And then our next meeting is on the same night as the tree lighting. So at 7:00, right after the tree lighting on December 1st, we have a city council meeting. So just keep that in mind, whatever event is going on, Heath, we've got to excuse the mayor.
We'll keep the program short and sweet, right? Right, Heath?
I did, did want to, uh, give you a heads up and a, of an item that we'll be talking about more, um, as it gets, well, in your next meeting. Um, or perhaps our second meeting in December. The state of Utah Legislature approved, um, a bill earlier this year in their, their session this year that requires cities to map. It's a wildland urban interface, sorry, a wildfire urban interface. Is that right? WUI, W U I is what they're referring to.
There are so many acronyms in government, it's insane.
So they, they've looked at, uh, a, a set of factors that comes up with an exposure, uh, score and then identifies areas. Uh, this was a map that was sent to us by Orem Fire Department where we'll be meeting with them. The state is requiring that cities have to adopt a, a WUI map. Um, and then corresponding with that is a set of building criteria that any new structures have to comply with within this area. And then beyond that, the state will be, uh, working with Division of Natural Resources and actually inspecting structures within these areas over the next couple of years. Um, they will be applying a fee, um, to the properties, uh, we're assuming through the county property tax. Um, that will pay for this inspection program. They would be looking at things such as, uh, defensible space, making sure landscaping is far enough away from structures. And if residents do not make some effort to comply and reduce their wildfire risk, they will be assessed a higher fee. And so this is new legislation, but just a heads up, we'll be talking about this in our next meetings. So we are required to adopt this by January. So, um, just an FYI.
Does that map in the yellow? Is that showing where you have to have something?
I don't know the answer to that yet. And so this is something that the fire department sent over to us with, um, very high and extreme exposure levels. And, and so we'll be getting some more information. We'll, we have a meeting with them tomorrow and just a heads up, so.
All right, very good. Anything else? All right. We'll move on now to our approval of the minutes on item number six. If the council has had a chance to review, um, and note any changes or adjustments, I would entertain a motion once.
I've reviewed a mayor and I'd like to move that we approve the city council minutes of November third, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that is unanimous. Thank you so much. Now we move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. These are items that do not require public com- comment. They're somewhat housekeeping items and we do have something here this evening that staff will present.
This is just a surplus equipment for, uh, a vehicle, a truck that, uh, we have this new turnover on our leased vehicles with the police department. So we're surplusing this twenty twenty-one Ford F- one fifty.
Looks like a great truck. I move to approve the consent agenda, item as presented.
Second.
All right, with a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick, all in favor.
Aye.
Is unanimous, thank you. Okay, moving on to item number eight. This is a public hearing. We're going to be reviewing an ordinance regarding road cross-sections on one thirty-five West. There's a lot of design and discussion that's been going. There's a lot of complexities. Um, I've even today received a letter from a resident asking about this road and could it be, you know, intended to? Um, and hopefully people, this will start the discussion of all the issues that need to be addressed, so.
Make a motion to open a public hearing.
Very good, thank you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Broderick to open a public hearing, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. So last week, uh, Planning Commission recommended approval for the one thirty-five West Trail Cross Section Development Manual Amendment. And recently, uh, the vacant portion of property at one sixty-five West, two hundred North, um, which is located right here, was being evaluated for development. The current adopted trail section that applies to the street has narrow asphalt width. So the city is proposing to amend this cross-section, um, with a wider asphalt width to be able to accommodate on-street parking. This is something that is needed for the farmer's market and other city-held events since parking is limited in the park. The updated cross-section eliminates the two-foot right-of-way behind the curb. So right here, we have the current ten-foot trail in the fifty-foot, uh, right-of-way at the top. And this is, um, right below it, the proposed one. So we're going from the two, two feet here, we're eliminating that and, um, we're just starting the right-of-way at this area here. We're still maintaining that fifty-foot cross-section, um, as we did for the current ten-foot trail. Um, but we're also, um, increasing the amount of, um, asphalt width. So we're expanding it from the twenty-seven feet to the thirty-two feet. And then we are also, um, decreasing the sidewalk width over here from the five foot to a four foot. So it's giving us a little bit extra room. So, um, with that, um, are there any questions for me?
Do we have an appli, an inactive application on that land that kind of started the conversation? Or is that?
It's been in conversation in public works for a couple of years that we need to tend, but yeah.
We, we had a development review committee twice with the developer, um, that he, he recently backed down.
And the, the additional asphalt will be beneficial so cars can park. Cause right now, if you man, if you think of our cross-sections in the city that are only twenty-seven feet, you can only really park on one side of the road and then not impede, um, traffic crossing one another. So that was one thing we talked about. And then Brittany, if you could clarify, is not the, I know that in this, the way this is laid out, we're seeing the ten-foot asphalt on the left, sidewalk on the right, the ten-foot trail. Could you let the council know that is, the trail is being proposed on the east side? So you might need to flip this around in your mind, depending on how you're looking at the road in your mind.
That is correct.
So one of the other things we talked about is all of those properties will need some water. Uh, Juan, could you speak to so, all the different issues that need to be addressed underground infrastructure as well?
So this road has, uh, an undersized, uh, has an undersized water line also as well as, uh, old. So we're going to take advantage. And, and that's why we kind of, uh, put this road on hold of getting rebuilt because we need a, to replace the, the, the water lines there. But where our water, um, funds are a little low, we're, we're waiting to see how the, the well project finishes and then we can start the conversation. But at least we have the, the road width that it's probably better to approve it now and then we know what, what to shoot for after we get the, the water issue resolved.
Thank you. Council, do you have any other questions? This is a road that we've had on our minds for a long while and I've talked with residents there and said, we're working on it, we're working on it. But there were so many caveats, the topography, all the infrastructure, so many elements waiting on this than that. But we would really like to tackle this timeline, maybe the budget for twenty-six, twenty-seven. So fiscal year begins in July, for those that are listening online, July to June. So that could be potentially somewhere in that fiscal year, we could hopefully appropriate what's needed, all these different various projects and get that improved.
Help me understand the trail. Will that be similar to like eight hundred West, our Heritage Trail?
Yeah, so it'll mi, match the, the ten-foot width that we have in the Heritage Trail. I think those are all ten-foot widths. Uh, for, we, we could have gone narrower, but there is a constructibility factor that usually the trucks that are backing into the trail to, to pave, they're already eight and a half foot wide. And if we go too narrow, then we'll be breaking sidewalk, the little curb behind it. So ten-foot is a, it's a good width to, to be able to construct it and to maintain it in the future.
Adam raised his hand.
So a number of years ago, we adopted our Parks and Trails Master Plan and show, it showed some wider asphalt trails similar to our Heritage Trail on Center Street in Lakeview, uh, connecting to this park. And went up one thirty-five and then headed north. And so this is following that master plan designation.
That's good to know. So there, i- it does go beyond just this road. It feels like a trail to nowhere.
It's a master plan to connect that school.
Eventually, if four hundred North was ever redeveloped, it would, it goes east. There's, there's a plan for it to go east.
As I recall, I think it does go east on Fourth North, yeah.
Yeah, if you pull up, I think you can go on the city website and see the, the trail master plan, the bicycle.
Yeah.
You know.
It makes sense, it's the Central Park. I, I, I get that. It felt like a trail to nowhere, so that's, that's a good answer.
There are a lot of, you know, kids and people coming to access the park or go to, you know, swimming lessons in the mornings. And so this will create a really good safe route. There was one question that was still hanging out in my mind, um, staff, Juan, Adam, from this meeting was, it was mentioned that because this is on a slope and a lot of those homes have been there for decades and obviously they have their driveways and their, you know, different features of their properties that are kind of on the city easement. There will have to be some matching up, you know, when this is created. You had said potentially, is this still a possibility that because a curb and gutter might present on the trail side, a little issue, maybe just keeping it flush with the road? Was that?
So we, we were talking about that, but once, once we get this road section approved, then we'll start all the surveying.
The, the engineering.
And then we'll start.
So there could be a tweak potentially, your suggestion, but maybe not. Maybe this will suffice.
We'll, we'll just have to get creative. Uh, for example, on eight thirty-five, um, east, when we went to repave that, you can see that, that the, the curb and gutter on one side is higher than the other one. And we ended up going with a two percent here and then we made it a little steeper on the other side. So we'll, we'll, we'll have to, to find the right blend of what elevations work and we'll, but once we have this cross-section, we'll get, working on it and present you with a, try to build it as cost-effective as possible.
Okay.
This is engineered and designed. Don't make any promises would be my suggestion.
Yes.
So keep this vague with those members of the public that live there, that were working on a plan. We've adopted a new cross-section that should be more, um, should be better for this location. And until we finalize a design, we don't know how it's getting back to their driveways or their front yards. We need to look at all of those things before we finalize the decision. And we won't know the costs of this.
Right.
Until after that's all engineered and designed.
And so. Many things.
So we're, we're exploring this, it's on our radar.
And hopefully there is, uh, it comes to our attention, of course, the Fox property in the south, but then also the one on, uh, four hundred North, it's for sale. So we don't know what, what, what will happen with those properties and maybe we, we get a little bit of help of whatever develops there.
But certainly the, having a cross-section adopted helps things po, hopefully be going in the right direction if someone's required to put in those.
Do you anticipate parking on both sides of this? It looks like there's.
Can you go back to your cross-section?
Yeah, go to the cross-section. It looks like there's eight feet on, on each one potentially.
Yeah, so we have six feet of asphalt. You see the ten-foot lanes is a, it's a pretty good width for it. And then we have the six-foot, but then we also have an, an extra eighteen inches of, on the gutter. So it, it will be tight, but we can accommodate both of them.
That, that, uh, farmer's market, we went several times. My son had a little booth and that, it needs parking. And so I had, I, I would imagine, and I would say anticipate, if there's availability, they're going to take it.
And also this cross-section is only applying to the one thirty-five West. So this, this design is only specific to this road.
All right, thank you. Well, this is a public hearing, so we will open it to public comment or, uh, to anyone who's here regarding this matter. All right.
I'd make a motion to close the public hearing.
Oh, moved, okay. So moved by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt, all in favor to close the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, council, it is back to you.
I'm ready to make a motion unless somebody else has questions.
I just, one comment, Van, before you do. I, I would say, there was part of me that said, man, let's do away with that trail. It does seem like a, a trail to nowhere, but I'm, I'm calling back to some Linden Elementary conversations of children trying to get there and the lack of sidewalks that there's probably several that'll be able to catch that rather than going up and around and then hit the, the trail through the park. So anyways, I, I'm supportive, but, but, uh, appreciate us looking at all sides of this. Go ahead.
I move to approve ordinance amendment twenty twenty-five dash sixteen dash O as presented.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, seeing none, I'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you so much to all of our staff that have worked on this and heading in the right direction. All right, we will now move on to item number nine. This is a review and action item to, uh, award a bid for concrete construction services. And this will be presented by Mr. Cowie. And then Juan, if you would like to step forward and provide any additional information.
Uh, this is a recommendation by our Public Works Department to award this bid to FCI Companies, Inc. We, basically, they took all of our proposed road projects, anything that involved concrete work and totaled up all of those areas that, and then bid it out as one project. And then we had multiple bidders, it was a large group. Uh, we gave you a copy of the tallies there from each of these companies. Uh, FCI is Denny Farmworth, a local resident, and he was the low bidder. We've used him this last year, he was the low bidder and he basically improved his prices from the prior year, which is awesome. We're glad that he's interested in being here in Linden. Uh, he's done a good job for us.
He also bailed us out on a water main break, if I recall?
He helped us tremendously, he and his boys, yeah, so. Um, so basically, this is, these contractors giving us unit prices for this total sum. We may use those prices for other projects that were not included in this list. And so we're awarding the contract to essentially be our concrete contractor for the next year.
And I, I have to say, every single resident who's had their work done on behalf of the city for some of these road improvements and water improvements, just say the highest praise for the quality of the work and his team and his crew. So I'm really grateful that they were the low bidder because they have an excellent track record, so.
Yeah, reputation's well.
One more clarification, this is a little bit unique. We've included there the contract price, it says a hundred and twenty-three thousand. That, that was the bid based on all of our projects. If we change a project or we don't do a project or we add things, this dollar amount will change. And so just keep that in mind.
I'd make a motion unless someone else has.
I would throw out, as a general contractor who's done many, many bids over the years and you see the report, uh, where they come back with a tabulation, this is a great bid. It's not a concerning bid because it's way low. It's right there where it should be. And, and yes, they've, it's a quality contractor that's done lots of work for us, so.
Could you say more to that, Van? Cause I don't know anything about this, but I was like, the average bid was two hundred and six thousand and the median was a hundred and eighty-three. And so I just, the difference of like, it was so far away from the median that I was like, is there something missing? But from your perspective, it's, it has all the pieces.
Yes.
So the other ones are really overpriced.
Oftentimes, the top five or six, you kind of just have to throw out when there's this many.
They're busy, they don't really want the work, they're just going to throw a high bid to make it worth their time.
And sometimes the lowest is not a reputable or vetted company, so you don't always take the lowest.
Yeah, that's, that's great.
So you really like that low bid to be within ten percent of the number two bid? That's kind of a good sign. I, I know for, for me, your bonding company really wants to know why you're more than ten percent lower than the next guy. But yeah, good bid right here. A solid track record with us, I, I highly recommend, we vote for this. So go ahead, make your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, approve the bid award to FCI Companies, Inc. for concrete construction services as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Stewart. Any further discussion on the motion on the table? All right, seeing none, we'll call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and thank you, yes. Van, it's so great, he, he, you know, sitting in those public works meetings and having that. and having that contractor perspective is really great. So thank you.
Yeah, super helpful.
Gives us a lot of assurance. We're.
And again, I'm glad you always express our appreciation to everybody that submits a bid. A significant amount of time, effort, and resources is always used when a company provides a bid. So thank you for adding that up.
Juan, item number 10 is our council meeting's calendar. Do you have any comments about that since you end up being here?
They might change.
Well, your wife, no dates on those nights, right? Okay, no.
Thanks.
All right, that brings us to item number 10. And this is also a review and action for our 2026 public meeting schedule, which does follow the calendar, traditional months from January to December, not the fiscal year. So did everyone have a chance to review and consider those dates?
Ask you a few of these dates. So we've highlighted that April 6 date. That is spring break for those in our new, well, still in our Alpine District this year. We, the last couple of years, we've run into barely having a quorum. So I'm just throwing that out. Is that something you want to keep on the calendar, or do we just preemptively take that off?
I think you keep it as tentative now. And if we get there and we don't need it, you can cancel it. But if there's pressing items and we have a quorum here.
Okay.
I mean, some of us don't have kids and school age, so it's not, it's kind of not a holiday we're really tied to as much.
Guess this is more maybe Jake and Cole.
Yeah.
December 21st, that is the week of Christmas. That was the same question. Do you want to leave that on or take that off?
Off.
Seems like things slow down as far as things needing to be on the agenda typically.
Okay, so we can strike that one. The two others with the asterisk, August 17th. Now I'm struggling to remember what that was, Brittany.
That was, oh, because we were doing, it's like a month between the meetings because it was taking up the first two weeks of August.
So we've traditionally not held a meeting the first week in August because of Linden Days. But now it sounds like we're gonna move that up to the last week of July. So is there any, any desire to move that to August 3rd would be the first meeting? First Monday. We've usually just done one meeting in August and July, just with summer vacations and everything. Or are you okay to commit on the 17th? Our only concern was just if there's an applicant that has to wait a month and a half between a meeting if they haven't, if they've applied and.
Anyone have a conflict they?
I will not be here on August 3rd.
Okay, that would be the Monday following all of your Linden Days events. And so it would be a busy continuation of that week.
I'm available. I don't have any, I usually leave that week.
Yeah.
Stay, stay put. Can you see, I just don't have a life. Take the vacations for me.
Special meeting, maybe we'll throw something in there, but we'll just keep it as the 17th. It sounds like that, if Steve's gone for sure.
Oh, actually, I probably won't be here on the 17th either.
Well, there you go. It's sixes either way.
Yeah, it is.
The 19th of October is school fall break. So.
Similar to spring break, let's keep.
Leave it on and then see what happens?
Yeah.
Okay. Other than that, we have our holidays there identified for the '26 calendar year and all the planning commission meetings. They may want to remove that November 24th meeting. We had a little asterisk there. So, any other questions on this? Well, we would be ready for a motion then, Mayor, if it sounds like we would just remove December 21st. And then the others will keep on with an asterisk.
I'll make a motion. I move to approve resolution 2025-26-R with the removal of December 21st, 2026, from the city council portion.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Hoyt. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it is approved. All right, it's nice to know it's, we have something that we can publish and plan and then have a little flexibility as needed. All right.
You know what, I'm sorry, Mayor, really quick, looking at our calendar for the planning commission meeting then, that is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Do we, do we just cancel that for them?
Yes.
Yes, we remove.
Are you okay with that? Shouldn't you amend your motion?
I amend my second.
To remove November 24th from there.
All right, all in favor to the amend the motion as stated?
Aye.
Thank you. Saves them a meeting there. Next.
All right, next. Item 11 is our council liaison and mayor pro tem assignments for the calendar year. And it was a pleasure to get an opportunity to speak with each of you. I just want to express heartfelt thanks for all that you do. I'm absolutely, you're all doing amazing things. And you all bring your A-game, and you're engaged, and you contribute significantly. And it's, you're all doing amazing and fantastic. And, but I would like to recommend, I know you're all feeling very well settled, but next year, it might be nice if you want to let me know maybe one or two things to cross and juggle around and move the deck and get some different experiences if you'd like. I'm open to that. And of course, if any of you, for example, come up with new, you know, things that are meaningful in the city, like Cole's proposal with our arts council, clearly that's something we can add to his liaison duty during the year. This isn't set in stone that we only do it now at the end of the year. So we can make adjustments again.
So you're saying if we make a suggestion, we'll be assigned it?
Potentially, yes. Yes, why not?
Just for others.
Volun, voluntold or something? Is that the word? All right. Anyway, did you have a chance to look those over, counsel, and any questions?
I think these are great. Appreciate the thought that goes into it. Only question I had on the newsletter articles, I've got December, and then it shows me it's February 2026.
Oh, we can, we just tried to shuffle it a little bit, but didn't catch that, Jake. So how about?
Van.
There's that volun told.
With Van?
You know what, you know what you could do is you could swap me and Lincoln. That would put me December this year, December next year.
Okay.
I don't know when the last time he did. It just seems, that's two and, two and three months.
You don't want to do an extra term paper?
I don't know if the city can handle it.
That's great.
With that said, I'm glad to make a motion. I appreciate the work the mayor's put into it, and I'm excited about it.
It's for reaching out, too. I always appreciate it.
And I have to thank Adam. Adam's a great resource. He provides suggestions. He looks this over with me. And it's a team effort for sure. And appreciate all your feedback and all you each do on these assignments. I think, gosh, for such a small city, we have such robust programs and amenities and resources. And the liaison just really kind of is the cherry on top that you all add to our staff to feel supported and keep things rolling and humming. So was that a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move to approve resolution 2025-27-R with the change to the newsletter articles that we discussed.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hoyt, seconded by Councilmember Broderick. Any further discussion, Councilmember Broderick? Maybe you need something added? You sure?
Wonder if we could just take our name off the newsletter?
All right, we have a motion. Any further comment? All right, I'll call the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right.
While we're on that topic, tomorrow, if the mayor can't be there, it sounds like Jake, so I think you are mayor pro tem.
Give him a little power.
Keep him in check.
Great.
Okay.
All right, I'm waiting.
Any temple updates? I know all the dates. Is there anything they've asked from the city council?
Not from the city councils. So they've, they've asked for Chief Brower and myself to serve on a couple committees dealing with traffic and circulation and parking. And then I'm on a different one, different group that's looking at invites and making sure to catch elected officials.
You're all on the list for invites.
But nothing substantial that you need to.
I would like, I'm gonna try my level best to see if we could get just a preliminary tour together. And see if that's possible.
Sounds like they will be inviting elected officials from the area and from the state. There's two days that are reserved for.
There's a pre-reception couple of days.
Special tours that they're having for those types of individuals, the first two days before it opens to the general public.
Yes. So I was invited to those, well, I was able to bring a group of 30 to Orem and to Saratoga Springs, and it was quite nice. So either if you can't have your own pre-tour, I'll, we'll loop everybody in. So.
Great.
Okay, that's.
I think Wayne Corbridge, who's a Linden resident, is helping coordinate a lot of the open house.
He is on one of the committees. So there, just as a heads up, while we're on that really quick, it will be intense, would be the word I'm gonna use. As you talk with people, especially those on Center Street and along 835 and 900 East, we need their patience for that entire month. It will be, they are estimating it's in the hundreds of thousands visiting the site over that month. Daily, it's a lot, a lot of traffic. And so they are not shuttling anywhere. They are not going to do that at this temple. They found that the timed tickets have not been effective, so they don't have a timed system. So it's a free-for-all. So you might get a lot of people that show up. They are parking at the temple and at the church across the street. That is it. That is their plan.
There's another church a little bit east you could park at, too, a little longer walk.
Yes. And so they'll, they'll have the temple, the workers, the volunteers. They'll likely be shuttling them from the steak center up by Azerson's property there.
Steak center.
But the parking for the actual visitors is at the temple. They have just over 500 spaces, and then the older church across the street. So we're concerned about that. We've asked for them to come up with a Plan B that actually has a shuttle system from one of the other churches, either on the north or to the south. And so they'll be evaluating that as a Plan B. But as of right now, their current plan is not to have a shuttled or timed system. So just ask for our residents' patience. We'll be posting that several times ahead of this.
Which brings up my final question. I'm so glad, Chief, you're still here to the end. Thank you. Not so fast. We ideally had hoped that this would occur during non-school hour, you know, when school's in session. That is not the case, unfortunately. But there have been some questions by community members. Hey, you know, Center Street is already quite busy. We have four schools on Center Street. So, you know, the mornings and the afternoons, will there be some coordination during, do you have anything? I'm sure you've heard this. This is not new news.
In our meeting with, with the committee, the first meeting we had, we discussed that issue directly. We were hoping to give some timeframes to work the ticket process, but it sounds like they're not doing that. We, we made the recommendation that when they start advertising and pushing social media out, that they have traffic come from different angles to avoid that Center Street. Our biggest public safety concern is obviously coming off State Street to Center Street and headed east with the elementary schools drop off.
There is stacking that happens of cars.
It's already congested to State Street and backing up. And that's, that's one of our biggest concerns. We'll meet with our crossing guards and, and come up with some communication with them so we can be, help where we can. But hopefully, as these meetings continue with the committee, we can come up with some game plans to reduce all of the traffic coming up Center.
All right. One other question. So I'm assuming there'll be coordination with our schools, our crossing guard, you know, duty, people on duty and all that as well. Will there be increased crossing guard individuals, maybe beefing that up? Or what do you see as some of the things to help keep the safety?
We will be asking their, their offset. The crossing guards are offset at timeframes.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll see about bumping them, see if they can stay for two hours instead of the one per each school. We'll have them come for two and kind of help out each other.
Great.
So we'll kind of coordinate that way a little bit as well. Some of the other big concern we have is with that flooded traffic and the, as it gets dark when people are still arriving in the Murdoch Trail, we need to evaluate how we can ensure some safety across the Murdoch with this heavy traffic coming as well.
What is the lighting situation there currently? Is it?
There's, there's new lights that are in front of the temple, but they don't go.
They're not, that, right where the crossing is though?
They don't go up all the way.
On the north side is what I'm wondering. Maybe I'll drive there tonight and look.
There's, I don't believe there's any streetlights on the north side.
And we'll work with Brian a little bit because there's, I think there's just not having volunteers there.
I wanted to see that north end, if maybe a street lamp would be.
I mean, there's, there's a street light on the corner, and then there's another one right there.
Right.
Actually, there's one right there. You can see the shadow.
Okay, we'll see how that helps.
That's really close to the crosswalk, actually.
We've discussed additional signing on the trail prior to just letting, letting people utilizing the trail. That would be heavy traffic.
Temporary stop signs.
And there's actually stop signs there. So, yeah, there's stop signs on each side of the Murdoch. Just more education that way, and we'll, we'll look at that as well.
Yeah, their current plan is to route people coming to the temple up Center Street and then enter on this parking entrance there. And then they'll, on the exit, they'll have people exit out and come down 835. And so 835 or 900, it will be busy.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, Chief. Great, great things for us to share with the community.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, I was waiting for it. Hey. Motion by Councilmember Broderick, seconded by Councilmember Stewart to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, have a great evening, everybody.